Like to call the meeting order, please. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Mayor Proton Poken Court?
Here.
And Mayor Davies?
Here. If we could all stand up for our pledge and our invocation. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Gerald Fair from the Tatchby Calvary Chapel Church.
We can do it first.
Yeah, we'll do that first.
That or the pledge allegiance first?
We'll do you first.
God first.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, thank you for another evening and Lord, we just thank you for the way that you've shown this great city tremendous grace and blessing as the city continues to grow and flourish and thank you for the resources you've provided. Thank you for the finances, God. Thank you for the great minds, our city council, our mayor. We thank you for our police department, our public servants, the fire department. Lord, thank you for our healthcare divisions and thank you for our small businesses and Lord, I just even thank you for our Tatchby Warriors football team, God, and just thank you for the many blessings you continue to pour out. So Lord, give our council wisdom and discernment and as the city continues to grow and flourish, Lord, may your hand be in the middle of all we do. And so, thank you for this time. Bless our council, bless all the citizens of Tatchby, God, and continue to bring more people to our great city. Thank you for everything you've done for us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we have a full crowd in the back row here. It's cool. I'd like to ask the police chief if he could come up to the podium, please. Chief, how are you doing this evening?
Good, Mayor, council. How's everybody this evening?
Good, and you?
Good. So, you know, we've been making a pretty big push to hire and get fully staffed in the department. And I would like to say that with the swearing in tonight of Officer Gregorio, we have met that mark. He is our newest hired officer. And we also have Reserve Officer Hayman who's here, and I'll get both of them up here in a second and we'll do the swearing in and let them introduce their families and kind of talk about themselves a little bit and give you some background on them. Really excited to have them here. But I'd like to take a moment to thank Sergeant Rupert for his efforts in getting folks hired in the backgrounds and the process. One of the things that you'll find is that is how we're doing things in the department now. I don't get involved in the hiring until the end when it's time for a chief's interview and asked to say yes or no. The sergeants are very instrumental in doing the backgrounds and doing the hiring because my philosophy is they have to supervise these folks that they bring on daily and a day-to-day basis to make sure they fit into the team. So I want them very involved in the hiring process and so far it's working out fantastic. So if I can go ahead and get ready to do a swearing in? You want them both at the same time?
Sure.
Come on up, gentlemen.
You go ahead, come up here. We'll make it get in front of everybody. Because you're going to raise your right hand. Okay, raise your right hand. Oh, sorry. Because we already did this in city halls. Okay. I, Michael Gregorio, and Robert Hayman do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I hold true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California, that I take this application freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations.
The rain.
We'll trade off what I'm here to say. But if I can, real quick, before they introduce their families and have who they want to place their badge on them, come up to the front of the room. Officer Hayman is coming to us with quite a lot of experience with the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. And so, we're really looking forward to bringing him on as a reserve. I tried to convince him just to come full-time, but he's a pilot right now and I'll let him talk a little bit about that. And also Officer Gregorio comes to us from the Nevada County Sheriff's Department where he was a jailer and he has family ties in Bakersfield. He wanted to come up here and be part of this community and we're happy to have him. So with that, who would you like to pin you, Officer Hayman? Your wife will take it?
My wife, Connie, yes.
Let me trade you back. Make sure I get them right. There you go. Did I trade them right? Yeah, I'm blind. Oh, switch them. Should have did by the way. Officer Gregorio, who you have?
I'm going to have my dad, Ed Gregorio, come up and pin me.
Do you all want to have the whole family come up if you have anybody else to get photos?
Sure.
Just you two?
Okay.
You want to have your family come on up?
Yeah.
Hold on, real quick, have you introduced your family? Doing two at once has me all thrown off. It is, it is. No, a lot going on tonight. All right. That's it?
That it?
You're good. You guys want to say a few more?
Introduce yourself. Do I introduce yourself?
My name's Robert Hayman. My background, I joined the United States Air Force 2004, got out in 2012 and went directly into LA County Sheriff's Department. While I was there, I was a bailiff in court services and then I went out to patrol at Lancaster and I was there until twenty twenty twenty. Since then, I had an opportunity to be an engineer out at Edwards Air Force Base, human factors engineer. And that job just didn't really turn out to be what I had hoped. I was able to then pursue professional pilot ratings with the FAA, so I'm now a commercial pilot. And I recently got a job with a medevac company, so I'll fly doctor teams around to different cities. They'll, you know, harvest organs and fly them back to help save somebody else. So that's kind of why I opted not to go the full-time route, but I definitely miss law enforcement and the city of Tatchby definitely was welcoming of me and I'm excited to be here. So that's kind of a little bit about me.
Thank you.
It's my wife Connie. We're expecting twins in April. So it's a, that's a pretty new development and pretty exciting and terrifying at the same time, so.
You're two at once?
I'm Michael Gregorio, I'm 28 years old, born in Fresno, grew up in Paradise, California. Moved to the Grass Valley area to work for the sheriff's office, Nevada County Sheriff's Office after graduating the police academy in 2020. I worked in the jail for three years and then an old friend of mine used to work for the Tatchby Police Department and told me I should come check it out. Did a ride along, loved this city, it's a beautiful town and just reminded me of Paradise, less pine trees, but still that nice, you know, the atmosphere and everything, so. And then I have family that still lives in Paradise and all my dad's family lives still in Bakersfield, so I have the family community as well. And they're right here, so. This is my Uncle Louis, this is my dad, Ed Gregorio, my mom Stephanie Gregorio, my Uncle Alvin and my Aunt Andrea.
One last photo with council. You want to come up here, council? If you don't mind?
I'll look over here. One more. We didn't have P over there telling dollars to look at. Are you tonight?
Good, how are you, Mayor Davies and council? I just wanted to take some time to recognize the hard work that went into the downtown Trick or Treat Trail. That was a new event put on by the Go-To Girls with the help of the Greater Tatchby Chamber of Commerce. There's nearly forty local businesses involved and there had to be hundreds of families and kids that hit the streets of downtown and had a great safe Halloween and as one of the people that was able to be there handing out candy to kids, there was nothing but positive comments, so on behalf of the city, just wanted to take a moment to recognize the hard work and hopefully a fun new tradition that will continue in the city. So at this time, Mayor Davies, I ask you could present the two certificates to the Go-To Girls and the Chamber of Commerce.
All right. What a wonderful event. Everything was wonderful. I heard a lot of positive things from everybody. A lot of candy, a lot of candy everywhere.
A lot of candy.
Yes. So it was a pretty awesome, especially a lot of the young people that I know, they're all very happy, so. Certificate of recognition. The Tatchby City Council would like to recognize Go-To Girls and the Greater Tatchby Chamber of Commerce for the hard work and initiative put on by downtown Trick or Treat Trail, which took place on October 31st, 2023 and involved nearly forty local businesses. The Tatchby City Council and our residents, thank you for offering this safe and festive event to the public and continue to grow the sense of community in Tatchby. We appreciate your dedication to supporting local businesses and hosting family-friendly entertainment opportunities for our residents. Signed by myself and the city council.
All right, thank you.
Let me present this to you.
Good picture?
If we go here first, I'm going to do key badge.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, now this here is to the Greater Tatchby Chamber. Is this a, is this thing?
We're a group. It's okay.
Okay. Make sure I get it right here.
It's a group effort.
All right, certificate of recognition. The Tatchby City Council would like to recognize Go-To Girls and the Greater Tatchby Chamber of Commerce for the hard work and initiative put into the downtown Trick or Treat Trail, which took place on October 31st, 2023 and involved nearly forty local businesses. The Tatchby City Council and our residents, thank you for offering this safe and festive event to the public and continue to grow the sense of community in Tatchby. We appreciate your dedication in supporting local businesses and hosting family-friendly entertainment and opportunities for our residents. Signed by myself and the city council.
Perfect.
More pictures.
That's for her. That's for Claire.
Awesome, thank you. Well, and I want to thank you guys so much for doing this and for recognizing. It was really amazing hearing from Bela and Michelle and Go-To Girls and Funky Junkin'. And suddenly, we had forty businesses and the chamber is in a perfect position to help assist something like that and we were able to help get the map going and spread the word, but all the heavy lifting, the spearheading, all of it came from these two wonderful businesses and individuals in our community. We had fun. Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
All right. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-contribution by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in a listed sequence with opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Do we have any, anything need to be removed by our audience tonight? Counsel? Can I entertain a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power? Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Poken Court?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Audience oral communications. Do we have any emails or?
We do not.
Do we have any, any public comment for our audience tonight? Mr. Burgess? Could you please state your name and area of residence, please?
My name, what?
Your name and where you live.
My name's Gary Burgess. I live in the city of Tatchby.
Thank you, sir. There you go.
Okay. I just want to make a comment about a little experience that happened to me last week. I'm the managing member of Mountain Air Estates and Mobile Home Park on Denson Road. And we had a tenant come to us in our office about a tree that is in the right-of-way growing outside of the block wall of the city on the street right-of-way. And he said that the tree was growing over his, over the block wall into his backyard and he wanted us to trim it and maintain it. And we told him that the tree was in the city right-of-way and the city was supposed to do that. So he went to the city and he got an email back from Ashley saying that, no, it belongs to the property owner and we have to maintain it. So I went back down, I talked to Mr. Garrett and he said, yes, that's right, that we're supposed to maintain it. It's ours. Even though it's on city property, we're supposed to maintain it. I told him, I'd asked him if he could show me something somewhere where that was in the ordinance or somewhere in the city. And he said he'd get back to me today. He got back to me today. I got a phone call to pick up this copy of this paper that says, and he highlighted it here. Each property owner is responsible for the maintenance of all landscaping areas on-site as well as contingent planted areas within the public right-of-way. This particular ordinance here was passed when you guys did the new zoning codes and it was passed in October 2014. So is that radioactive on everybody else in the city? Like, do you maintain the tree in front of your house?
Yeah, I do. I pay a service to come and crowd it out.
Because of this ordinance?
It's been that way for a long time. I think it was codified 2014, but it's been that way ever since I've lived here. We take care of our own sidewalk and our own trees.
So every resident in the city is responsible for the trees in front of them? The sidewalks in front of them? The curb and gutter?
Curb and gutter? I'm not so sure. I'll defer on that one.
It's also state law that you're responsible for landscaping within the right-of-way. And that's been a part of the Tatchby municipal code for many years. I've been here for thirty years. It's been in there since.
I just asked him if he could show me that, okay? So when he showed me this, I got this particular code. And so I looked it up on the internet and I went back to your deal right here. It says landscaping standards. And the first thing up here is the purpose of this code being written, okay? And it's number C here. It says, this has required the provisions of adequate landscaping in connection with new development, the expansion of existing developments and changes in use, which is not, has none of these have anything to do with that over there. Nothing. So this code pass really doesn't have anything to do with regulations saying I have to maintain it.
Well, I don't know. I'd have to see the paper you got there, but it's in our code system. That's the zoning code. That was adopted in 2014 and taken from our municipal code.
Right.
It revamped the zoning code, but it didn't revamp that. That's been, that came in word for word from our municipal code. Now, the purpose of the zoning code, I'd have to look at that. I don't know what that, what that has to do with.
Well, this is what Mr. Garrett gave me and I'm starting to back to what, why I have to maintain those trees.
And it's state law.
And basically it says right here, the reason this adopted is for these conditions right here. So this, what he gave me wouldn't require, that, that isn't.
Yes, it does.
I got some advice from a person that said if I was supposed to maintain those trees, that there would have been something attached to the deed of that property. Like every other, you guys put in all these, what do you call them?
Landscape lighting districts. Is this on? Can you hear me? Or am I just talking? Either way. What we're talking about here is the Mobile Air Estates that was designed and built in the seventies?
Late eighties.
Late eighties, thank you. And there was a condition of, you know, curb, gutter, sidewalk, insulation trees. There's irrigation put in for those trees. Mr. Burgess told me he cut the irrigation off years ago. The trees are still there. A tenant asked him to maintain the tree, trim it. Mr. Burgess does not care to do that. So he came to the city and said, you need to maintain these trees. We don't maintain, as Mr. Smith had mentioned. We don't maintain people's trees in the right-of-way or easement. It's just, it's a utility easement or a public right-of-way in certain cases. When we plant trees, we maintain those. Landscape lighting districts, those people have a self-imposed tax for us to maintain that landscaping, sometimes lighting, sometimes retention. In the case of the Mobile Air Estates, there was no LLD at the time. But the project was conditioned to put those trees in and ultimately, of course, to maintain them. I offered to Mr., to the gentleman that if he cuts them down, code enforcement will probably come by and say hello. The trees were there, the irrigation was there, the irrigation's been cut down. We're talking about maybe a couple hundred dollars for a professional to trim the tree. We're not in that business. We don't maintain people's landscaping. In this case, we don't do it. Mr. Burgess doesn't want to pay somebody or do it himself. He wants the city of Tatchby to do it, the taxpayers to maintain his landscaping that he put in or the development put in years ago.
No, I want to use my tax dollars to maintain it. That project is putting how many tax dollars in the city's coffers? From the tax dollars that's getting off those taxes, all those houses and the project itself. What do we get in return? Police Department and Fire Department?
If we were to maintain Mr. Burgess's landscaping, we're going to maintain everybody's.
And they say also, you told me that that tree, I'm liable for that tree. So if your tree falls over in the street causing an accident, they can sue you.
That's why I have homeowners insurance. Yes. Yeah, I know, it's a, I hear you. I'm in the same spot, but every couple of years I spend seven, eight hundred dollars now because the trees are bigger for someone to come and I used to trim them myself. I don't want to get up on the ladder anymore, so I have a crew that climb the tree and they're bonded, so in case they fall out of the tree.
Right.
And they have bucket trucks and it's a pretty penny for me to do that, but it's my responsibility. And it's yours over there. It's been that way since I've been on there.
But still, you haven't shown me anything, any ordinance or anything that says that. Have you?
It's in our, it's in our city municipal code.
That's what I asked him for and he gave me this.
He gave you the zoning ordinance. It's in the municipal code, I believe. Okay, the city municipal code got moved into the zoning code, but yes. I maintain mine, Gary, so I think you're going to have to maintain yours.
Still, it's just, I'm back to the same question. Can you show me anything in writing that says that?
We did. The zoning code is law.
And this zoning code, right there on the maintenance of landscaping on the first paragraph of this deal, it says straight right here that it's just for new.
There's also a state law that requires that. That's where that whole zoning code came from. That's where the original, the municipal code came from. I don't know how it got moved out of the zoning code and I don't know what language it went in. But I'm sure it says in there that you have to, you're responsible for maintaining it. You're reading something at the beginning, at the beginning as why is the zoning code drafted in the first place?
And your sidewalk too. How's your sidewalk doing over there?
The same thing. Yeah, same thing.
I have to maintain mine.
So I mean.
And if my tree buckles up my sidewalk, I'm on the look for sidewalk repair.
Then it goes back to the same thing. Why are we paying taxes if we don't get anything for?
Well, for everything else, but the homeowners are, yeah. We all pay the same taxes, just like your folks in the, in the Mobile Home Estates.
Right.
I mean, they're paying taxes just like I am. Everyone in this room, city residents, we pay our taxes too. And that's for all of our services, except for trees and sidewalks.
Next, it'd be the streets.
I hear you. No, we, and we do maintain the streets.
Do we have any more public comments from the audience? I see that, so we'll move over to finance directory reports, item nine. RSI disbursements. I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI. I'll have our Mayor Proton Poken Court take over the meeting.
Okay, item nine, RSI disbursements and bills for September. Do I have any comments from the public? Counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Councilmember Power? Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Poken Court?
Yes.
Four zero vote with a recusal from Mayor Davies.
Thank you.
Police chief reports. Welcome back, chief.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor, council. So, brought my reading glasses this time. So what we have here is the first reading of the proposed ordinance related to military equipment in accordance with Assembly Bill 481. So as it reads, Tatchby Police Department is in possession of equipment that meets the criteria as being defined as military equipment in accordance with AB 481, which went into effect in January 1 of 2022. So in addition to So, uh, in addition to, uh, needing to do it for the purpose of the rifles that we carry on patrol, we also purchased two, uh, uh, less than lethal, uh, munitions launchers that we can utilize for, uh, uh, de-escalation and less than lethal. They should be backgrounds, basically if we needed to take a suspect into custody and we felt that it was necessary to have that. It's a lot more viable than having to buy, uh, beanbag shotguns for every unit in the department. So we purchased two of these that supervisors can deploy in the field. And so, uh, I know this has been attached to the council agenda item, so I'm asking council to approve the first reading and it has also been published in the paper in accordance with our requirements in the law.
Uh, do we have any public comments? On this item?
Nothing.
Okay. Do we have anything from the public on this item? Okay. So, uh, this is the first reading, so we'll, we have to wait?
Counsel.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, council member Smith?
So if you'll bring before the council any major items that you might want to purchase.
We do. I will.
Some cities would, uh, have been kind of overbearing with some of the equipment they've purchased to control their crowds and things. I don't think we fit in that category whatsoever, but, uh, and I think there was a, a former chief a while back that wanted to get some heavier gear, you know, but I'm not sure.
No, we don't need that. As a matter of fact, Ridgecrest Police Department has a bearcat now because they have a tactical team. So we have one of those available to us if we needed to request mutual aid assistance. The sheriff's department has one. This is only strictly for less than lethal rounds if we needed to take a, a combative suspect into custody that we didn't feel comfortable getting close enough, that our tasers would not be a viable or functional item. And it's something we can bring to a resolution. Um, I've seen them used a few times in my career and believe it or not, they're actually very effective. One of the good things about this ordinance is that it requires every year I have to come back and present this to you again, not as a reading type statute, but to basically let you know if there's been any purchases or updates, I have to file a report with the council notifying you if we have used any of the equipment in, in conjunction with our duties. And also I have to make a report and be available to the public to answer questions, which kind of segues into the fact that every year I can kind of do a town hall meeting, talk about this, but in addition, talk about other things with the community as well. So it's kind of a two-fold issue that's going to allow me to, to have a lot more, uh, communication transparency with the public. There's always been some debate, should our police rifles even be listed in this ordinance? Well, I feel they should, and I also went out and checked on multiple other agencies in California and they're listing them as well because I feel it's important that the public know what we carry, uh, you know, on any given day to, to provide them public safety services.
Mayor Pro Temp?
You mentioned something about a bean, like a beanbag. Uh, could you explain what that is?
So it's a round. We can either shoot foam rounds or a beanbag. It'll, uh, it's basically looks like a shotgun type shell and it ejects out of the gun. And when it comes out, instead of shooting pellets like a shotgun that shoots a beanbag or a wadded up beanbag that when it strikes somebody, it helps put them down. You know, we aim in the shoulders, legs, things like that, just a kind of way to knock them off balance. We can take people into custody.
Thank you. I had no clue what that was.
Uh, no, I just, I kind of agree with this. Uh, anything that we can use less, less lethal, we don't have to use a an actual gun or I think would be good to calm the crowd down. I think, uh, I've seen it in the past and I, I've heard of them and I've seen them in use. So anything that we can do, I think is a, a good item. It's a good thing. So, uh.
We need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to introduce. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power? Yes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp, spoken court?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
It's a five zero vote to approve the first reading and introduction of the proposed ordinance as read by title only.
Thank you. Uh, chief, item fourteen?
Okay. This is the one I'm thinking. Yeah. Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and read this one, counsel. I think there's a lot of detail in here that I need to get out and I think it's also important for the public that's here as well to hear. So I know sometimes we'll summarize these, but if you'll indulge me, I'd like to go ahead and read this one. Since taking over as the police chief in June of twenty twenty-three, I've conducted an analysis of the department as it relates to organizational structure, allocated positions, collateral duties, et cetera. In addition, there is an increased likelihood of substantial commercial and residential growth in the city of Tehachapi in the coming, coming years. So my analysis has been based on future needs of the department to not only maintain our current level of service to our community, but create more efficiency moving forward. The police department currently has one allocated police lieutenant position. To effectively implement the new organizational structure, it would greatly benefit the department to add a second lieutenant position. This would allow for the development to grow our future leadership and separate the duties of operations and administration with the, the organization. As we grow, it is imperative that we develop a complete command structure, which we are currently lacking. Also, the city of Tehachapi takes great pride in being the best and safest city in Kern County. And from a community policing standpoint, a viable and effective code enforcement program is necessary. The city of Tehachapi employs one full-time code enforcement officer who handles all day-to-day duties related to code enforcement. The city of Tehachapi recently employed a contract code enforcement officer for a two-month period to assist with issues in the commercial corridor. It was immediately apparent that was a good decision based on the need. However, it was not cost-effective as hiring, as hiring a second full-time code enforcement officer. The code enforcement officer currently answers directly to the chief of police. However, under the new structure, they will answer to the support services lieutenant. Both above listed positions will be funded through Measure S. In researching the related costs for these positions with Finance Director Hamid Jones, it was determined the Measure S revenue in the general fund will more than adequately fund these additional positions. Lastly, the city of Tehachapi benefits from an outstanding communications and community engagement. Our ability to maintain constant communication and transparency with our community is directly related to the success of the police department. Recently, Community Engagement Director Key Budge brought Maya Acosta on with the city of Tehachapi as a part-time employee and her impact was immediate. Based on his department's increased ability to engage the community more effectively in many different areas, I have reached out to him and discussed the police department covering thirty percent of her salary from the department's current budget. Through discussion with Finance Director Hamid Jones, the department's budget can cover this cost, which will increase our public engagement and visibility as it relates to public safety. The remainder of Miss Acosta's expenses will come from the Community Engagement Department. The Community Engagement Director is asking for the ability to hire Miss Acosta full-time. The current salary ranges are established, therefore there will be no change to salary or benefits. I have attached a copy of the proposed police department organization chart to the staff report. The fiscal impact, the total annual costs for adding the lieutenant and code enforcement officer positions are three hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, with the estimated budget impact to fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four being one hundred and sixty-six thousand and nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. These positions will be funded from general fund unappropriated reserves provided by Measure S. The total annual costs for covering a community engagement specialist position from a part-time to a full-time position are sixty-two thousand, six hundred and ten, with the estimated budget impact to fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four being forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. This position conversion would be effective with the pay period start date of November, November fifth and will be funded primarily from general fund unappropriated reserves with small allocations to the water, sewer and transit funds. So I'm asking, uh, council to approve the organizational structure and increased positions. And I'm happy to discuss anything further or explain where I came up with this organizational chart and why in our vision for the future.
Do we have any comments from the public on this? Counsel? Councilmember Smith?
Excellent. I think, uh, we evolved from a handful of officers a long time ago to a first-class police department. And I'm very proud that you've been able to bring us to a level where we need a second lieutenant. I think it's vital that you have your position and you've got the support from operations and support services that you need to make sure that you've got a complete broad spectrum of police department at your disposal. And I think the public will very well benefit from, from, from the increase. Yes. So I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you.
Um, I'm all for it. You know, we're at a shortage of police officers right now. People are not going into the profession. So I'm just hoping that we can get these positions filled properly and thank you so much for all your efforts. It's greatly appreciated.
So my, my anticipation for this is, is I'm looking at, we're going to start implementing these things immediately, obviously, but I'm looking at a five-year plan, you know, with our, our Sage Ranch, potential Capitol Hills development, these other condominiums wanting to come in. Um, if we can develop our command structure now, then all we need to worry about is filling from the bottom ranks later instead of trying to do both at the same time, which would be nearly impossible. So that's kind of where we came with this, looking at dividing the duties up, make the, the department much more streamlined and effective and be prepared for future growth.
Um, I think this is great. I mean, a distribution of responsibilities is always nice and clear and it makes it concise. And we were talking earlier about when, when you have routines and it becomes standard, that's when you really get really awesome. But you've, you've only been here for a little bit of time and you've just really, um, acclimated to the community and really made yourself known to other kids and everyone in the neighborhood and, and everybody. And, um, I think it's fantastic. Just kind of forward thinking is outstanding because you always want to be ahead of the problem, never reactive to the problem. So this is outstanding. Good job.
Thank you.
I, um, I never want to be in a position where our police chief has to say, well, you called, but I don't have anybody to send. We have seen Kern County do that and, and we don't ever want to be that way. We want to have officers on the street, doing their job, protecting people, and it's wonderful.
And being supportive of the community.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, my husband was a deputy sheriff for Kern County and when he started, they had, he had a five hundred mile radius from Walker Basin to Boron, and now they're back to the same thing that they started with and that was, what, twenty? Yeah, a long time ago.
Well, we, we have a lot of great folks that work in this department. I don't think they would ever want to be, uh, known as having to tell people that no one will respond. Um, so I'm, I'm pretty happy and confident with, with the folks that we have in place. And, um, like I said, this is building a, a vision for the future long after I'm gone and, and, you know, a lot of us have moved on. This would be a good solid foundation for a small department to start looking like a mid and a big a, as we move forward. And, and if you notice the way it's done, we still have room to add the necessary pieces if we continue to grow at a rate even beyond what, what, uh, Mr. Garrett and I have discussed.
Yeah. My comment is that, chief, thank you for all your work. Uh, I think it's always very instrumental that we have chain of command in place in anything, any organization, especially law enforcement. So we have that structure, so they're not all coming to you. You have your responsibilities and now your lieutenants have their responsibilities. So I appreciate that. Uh, just, uh, on a personal note, you know, being in the sheriff's department as a volunteer, just a volunteer, I understand, but it's very important that we have a ch, a chain of command structure in anything that we do. So we can get problems taken care of and I do appreciate you and your officers for what they do. It's a awful, it's great to see everybody at all these public events and always got a smile on their face and they're out there doing the job and a lot of people appreciate that and shaking hands and kissing babies, you know, so that's.
Well, we're, we're growing. We have two more dispatchers in the, the background pipeline. We'll be adding a records clerk. Um, you saw the job description changes that were on the consent calendar. We have, uh, a few more reserves that are in the background pipeline. We have three V I Ps that are currently in the background process, so the department's growing. So, and, and, and you know what? I've only been here four months. I can take a little bit of credit for it because I've been out there in the public, talking to people, but it's the men and women that have been here much longer than I do and the work that deserves the credit. I'm just kind of the, uh, you know, assisting with giving the voice out there and, and being a little more heard. But, uh, you know, ultimately it's their hard work and your support and the community's appreciation that's grown this department. So I just want to, I just want to be a cog for change. It just keeps it going.
Yes. I think it's important to note too that with Measure S, we're able to do this. We asked the public, uh, for additional funding. Maybe Greg, you could go into a little bit of that. Uh, but at this point with the additional officers, uh, code enforcement, how many sworn officers do you have? And how many do you have typically on patrol, like in nights and evenings, uh, daytime and whatever?
Will be fifteen, fifteen, sixteen when we're fully staffed? We have the three in the academy who will be coming to us the next couple of months. They're doing well, by the way. Um, and then we'll have the two code enforcement officers, which, you know, will give us, uh, front and backside of the week coverage there. Generally, we have a supervisor and, uh, you know, two to three on, which as we get fully staffed, we'll increase that. We have school resource officer who's doing, you know, great things over there. Uh, maybe one day, you know, look to expand that program in some different directions and, and different things like that. And so that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at. We're growing. The records unit's growing. You know, we, we talk about span of control, especially in the law enforcement, uh, you know, realm, it becomes more important because things start growing and things are always happening on a twenty-four, seven basis. And if we try to compartmentalize too many things to, to only a couple of people, things will start falling through the cracks. So as we kind of spread the span of control and put people in a position where they can effectively manage and oversee and at the same time be involved without getting in the weeds. Um, that's where we're at and I think we have the people in place and I think we're just going to grow and do great things.
I'm very pleased also with the visibility. People coming. They can see officers on patrol, the sense of security with that. And I don't think it's just a sense of security. We have security with this.
Uh, just on a personal note, over there in my neighborhood off Cherry Lynn, Cherry Lynn Estates, you know, I see, I saw the stop signs today. So all my neighbors have come to me. I've had phone calls or anything, making sure that we, if we can enforce the stop signs, I know.
Well, we have already. Well, the ones further down, yes.
Yes, yeah. So I, you know, it's been a good thing. We got the stop signs and there are still people. You know, they're notorious for running them just because they, they don't think anybody's around until we can.
They do.
Make that happen, so.
We'll, we'll get there, mayor. Right now I think we need to focus on the education aspect because anytime you put something up like that in a neighborhood, it just throws people off, off kilter and, 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 uh, we'll, we'll do our best to get out there and enforce, but educate at the same time.
Well, just on that note, when I took my little ones to school this morning, I noticed the stop sign was out and they have flags. If you can't see it, you're in trouble. I mean, they have little flags. I go, I think those are new.
Hey, it's, you know what? I haven't even fully moved in yet and got thrown off by one the other day. I pulled up, you know, and I was, because I'm patrolling and looking around and learning and everyone's like, whoa, there's a stop sign there now.
No, and I just, someone in that area just came up to me yesterday and said, oh, we need this stop sign. And I said, yeah, I know. I've gone up and down that street.
Yeah.
And I look and there's a stop sign and I thought Greg had mentioned to me that they were having a hard time obtaining stop signs.
It's difficult, believe it or not, get, to get those little things, you know, you wouldn't think, but it is. It actually is.
I was surprised. I go, it was hard to get a stop sign?
But, uh, I just want to say thank you, counsel, for all the support since I've been here and to the department and, uh, we'll continue to do good things for you.
Well, we appreciate you, all your efforts. It's very obvious. Thank you.
And then, uh, one, uh, oh, we need to, okay, let's make a motion on number fourteen, please. If I can get somebody to make a motion to approve the Tehachapi Police Department law. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power? Yes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp, spoken court?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
And one other personal, personal note, I want to also thank the chief. We had a, uh, special needs resource fair at the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints. And the chief was, uh, happy to stop by and share his thoughts with us on that. Lot of community things there. We had fifteen, I'm sorry, seventeen different, uh, community, uh, groups there at this, uh, fair. It was very well received and I don't know what was the total count, but I know we had over two hundred people there in attendance all through the day. So it really worked out and publicly I'd like to thank Timory Torres for putting this meeting on for the community. We just used our building, but it was open to the community, so it was a great event. Uh, with that, uh, we will adjourn to close.
City manager.
Oh, great. He's looking at me. Sorry, Greg. Thank you, everybody.
And your colleagues too, by the way. Yes. Um, just one thing. I'd like to invite the community out to honor our veterans. Saturday, November eleventh is Veterans Day. So Tehachapi Recreation Works District is hosting a Veterans Day parade along the S Street Parade Route starts at ten o'clock. And then at eleven o'clock in Central Park, there will be a ceremony to honor our veterans. But then at two o'clock, the city of Tehachapi will be, uh, assisting the American Legion in honoring, um, Tehachapi's only M I A, I understand. Uh, nice article in the paper, Claudia, by the way. Um, so that's at two o'clock. So we, we partnered with the American Legion right down on S Street behind City Hall. And we removed some grass or concrete, thank you to Dawn and public works crew. And then we've had, uh, donation.
And then we've had a donation, as you recall, about five or six months ago. The city council accepted, there are five or six benches, six of them total, thank you, from the renewable industry and Key Budge facilitated that donation. So the first bench will be, has been actually placed in its location there on S Street. Looks very nice. It's very clean. I think it's very fitting. And there is a plaque that has been received. So the Public Works Department will mount the plaque and at two o'clock on Saturday, there will be a short ceremony honoring the gentleman that was from Tehachapi, the TMI. So please join us for the, for the events on Saturday. It's not a celebration. It's a remembrance of our veterans. So please join us on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anything else?
Counselor?
Mr. Smith? Not the CD.
I just noticed that with our new repaving of roads, we're getting new striping in the city and it looks marvelous. You can see it. It stands out. It's great. And then my daughter was over in KB for a trick-or-treat and usually that place is a zoo. She said the police were very prominent and you could see them going around. So that was very appreciative. Also, the new stop sign, I noticed that and so I checked it out this morning and, and I looked and I go, yeah, that's brand-new. I mean, you could see the digging. So they've been on order for a long time according to the data. They were hard to get. I can't imagine anyway. And so those are my observations for my area and they're greatly appreciated, by the way.
So we had Halloween. My husband and I met on Halloween thirty, thirty-six years ago. And so our friends and family and children, everyone comes to our house for Halloween. And so we have people from Long Beach to Fresno come to visit Lompine and they're always amazed every time they come, every year, how awesome Tehachapi is, how polite our children are, how the, the police will stop, make sure everything's fine. We have the volunteers to stop by and have cocoa at the house and, and sandwiches and, you know, just visit, make sure everything's going fine. They're just always floored. They just said, man, this is just a slice of heaven here. It's like no other place. But as Halloween passes and we get ready, I know the Chamber of Commerce is organizing a Christmas parade and Key and Maya is organizing Tehachapi's downtown hometown Christmas. I always threw that up, I'm sorry. Which we have, how many vendors now or sites or booths?
Over thirty now.
Over thirty. So I know the city's doing a make-it-ornament and you've got the rotary, you've got the quilts and the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. So thank you, Chamber of Commerce and the parade. Can't wait to see Maya. Can't wait. It's, it's my favorite time of the year. I get a little crazy. I just love it.
I had the pleasure yesterday of giving a certificate to the Tehachapi Symphony Orchestra for their twenty-five years in Tehachapi. And I didn't realize it had been in the world. But, and I was disappointed. I couldn't stay because I had to go do something else. But I told them I was gonna come hear their Messiah presentation. So, you know, just sitting there, looking at the different instruments and watching them warm up, these are master musicians. These aren't just, you know, get-together Saturday night plays. So I, I thought it was nice and they seemed to be appreciative of it. So, thank you.
I'd like to just add to everybody's, what a wonderful event, the Halloween night and everything that we have in the town. A lot of positive comments from everybody that I've come in contact with. I'll clean their city books. Now we're gonna get ready for all the leaves falling, so we'll have a, we'll have a mess here soon. I know I will because they're starting to fall already. So with that being said.
What about Tehachapi Warriors?
Oh, oh.
I, I didn't even, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I got to attend the Tehachapi Warriors. They played VHS down in Bakersfield. There's a lot of talk that, you know, they're a much bigger school and they're gonna, they're gonna whip our butt and it turned out the other way. So, so now they play this Friday in Visalia and they're playing Tulare Union West, I believe. The game is at seven o'clock in Visalia and you can get online and find out.
Central Valley Christian.
Central Valley Christian. I'm sorry, thank you. So that's this Friday at seven o'clock. So if we can be there, we had, I would say we had three times the people at VHS than they did. It was packed. I, I was there and it was a great event. So well, well respo- well-supported by our community. And so typical Tehachapi football. This is, cheer them on. We got one more week to go, then we'll see where that leads us.
I have, Girls Volleyball also did very well. What they do though is they, they win their division, they're Division Two, and then they can put them up in Division Three playoffs. So. Yeah, football and volleyball have to move up to the next division. And I think volleyball went to the second round. So they did well. So anyway, just FYI.
That's it? Okay. Whoa, silence.
Oh, committee of silence.
Oh, thank you. All right. So one thing I get to do as the mayor with council's approval and the city managers, I'm gonna make some mayoral appointments tonight so that we can continue doing the city's business. So I'll just go through, do I just, just announce it?
Yeah, just announcing. If anybody objects, any of your colleagues, then you guys can fight it out.
They'll tell you if you're right or wrong.
Oh, okay. All right. So we'll do that. Item number one, emergency preparedness. Myself, Mayor Michael Davies, will be a public information officer. Public Works Director Don Marsh will be on that committee. Police Chief Richard Stanbridge will be our safety chief and Finance Director Hamid Jones, Hamid Jones will be the finance chief. City Manager Greg Garretson is committee and our Community Engagement Manager, Key Budge. Primary function is to establish and coordinate emergency preparedness in case of disaster in the city and the surrounding communities. Members of this group also serve as liaison with public safety departments, including the fire departments. Item two, common interest group, Mayor Michael Davies. This informal organization meets monthly and provides a forum for all local governments to meet and exchange ideas to report status of each member. Item three, Kern Council of Governments and Kern County City Selection Organization. Councilmember Philip Smith is a part of KernCog. Myself, I'll be, Mayor Michael Davies will be the alternate to Phil if he's unable to attend that. And our city engineer Jay Slosser is TTAC.
TTAC.
TTAC. And Don Marsh will be the alternate. All Kern County cities are represented by this state-mandated organization and primary evaluate, implement, transport issues. A secondary function is to appoint members to mandatory county organizations and committees. Item four, Department of Corrections, ACAP and Citizen Advisory Organization. Police Chief, Police Chief Richard Stanbridge will be the CAC. Mayor Michael Davies will be the ACC APS and our city manager, Greg Garrett. This group meets with local prison officials and coordinates and improves relations between CCI, the city and local community. The Associated Association of California Cities Allied and Prisons works with other California prison cities to public, publicize and promote areas of interest and benefit member cities. Item five, Kern Council Air Pollution Control District. Mayor Michael Davies and Councilmember Susan Wiggins, the alternate. The district mandate works with air pollution issues and the city is required by, by state and law to have a representative on this board. Through the Department of Motor Vehicles Program grants to reduce air pollution. The city and surrounding communities have received significant funding over the past few years to worthwhile pollution reduction projects. Item six, Kern County Association of Cities. All city council members, Mayor Michael Davies is KAC, KAC?
KCAC.
KCAC representative. This voluntary organization is comprised of all incorporated cities in Kern County. The members work collectively in solving common problems and achieving mutual goals. Item seven, League of California Cities South, San Joaquin Division. Mayor Michael Davies and Councilmember Phil Smith is the alternate. Most cities in California belong to this organization, with represents its membership on statewide legislation issues. A secondary function of this league is to train, educate, and advise on various functions, laws, and issues that pertain to member cities. Item eight, Tehachapi Senior Citizens Center Organization. Councilmember Susan Wiggins will lead this organization. Mayor Pro Tim Joan Pogancourt will be the alternate. Advises and works with the Senior Citizen Club and its membership on issues pertaining to its organization. Number nine, Personnel Advisors, myself, Mayor Michael Davies. The functions of this organization are to review, revise, and evaluate and advise and implement personnel issues that pertain to the city. Item ten, Golden Hills Community Service District Liaison. All city council members, Mayor Pro Tim Joan Pogancourt is the rep. Members of this group serve as liaisons with Golden Hills Community Service District. Item eleven, Capital Improvement Projects Group. All city council members, City Manager Greg Garrett, Public Works Director Don Marsh, Finance Director Hamid Jones, and City Engineer Jay Slosser. Members of this group rank and prioritize the city's capital improvements project. Item twelve, Tehachapi Unified School District. Mayor Pro Tim Joan Pogancourt, Councilmembers Wiggins is the alternate. Members of this group serve as liaisons to the Tehachapi School District. Tehachapi Valley Parks and Rec District, Mayor Pro Tim Joan Pogancourt and Councilmember Jeanette Power. Members of this group serve as liaisons to the Tehachapi Valley Recreation and Parks District. Item fourteen, Greater Tehachapi Economic Development Cooperation Corporation, Cooperation, I'm sorry. All city council members, Mayor Michael Davies will be the rep. Eastern Kern Economic Alliance, all city council members, Councilmember Susan Wiggins will be the rep. League of California Cities Public Safety Commission, Mayor Michael Davies and Police Chief Richard Stanbridge, safety chief. The commission reviews public safety legislation from the state and provides recommendations to the League of such legislation. LAFCO, no position currently held by the city. Kern Economic Development Corporation, KDDC. All city council members. A public-private partnership formed in nineteen eighty-eight with a mission of stimulating a diversified and strong economic climate in Kern County. Edwards Air Force Base Liaison, City Manager Greg Garrett, Honorary Commander, Alternate Councilmember Jeanette Power. Item twenty, Tehachapi Events Center Committee Oversight Board, Councilmember Philip Smith. And item twenty-one, SCE Government Affairs, Mayor Pro Tim Michael Davies. Do we need to?
No, it's just your appointment, so.
Nobody objected, so.
As long as they don't object, they are sitting on those committees.
All right. Good? We're all good? Good. All right. We'll adjourn to, we'll adjourn to glow session and one of us will come out and explain if we have anything to report.